This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk.
City Attorney Doctor?
Here.
City Manager Burton?
Here.
Commissioner Logan?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Here.
Mayor Collins?
Here.
And for the record, Commissioner Dean will be joining us a little late.
Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in a city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. It is a republic for which it stands, for one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The minutes from February twenty-seven, twenty-three, twenty-eight, twenty-three, and March eighth, twenty-three were received. Are there any comments, questions? Minutes will be received as submitted. Proclamation. City of Helena Proclamation. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil, wind, and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable source, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values and hence the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees wherever they are planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Helena has been recognized as a tree city USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting ways. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Wilmut Collins, Mayor of the City of Helena, Montana, do hereby proclaim April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three as Arbor Day in the City of Helena, Montana, and urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands, support our city community forestry program, and to plant tree to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. In witness hereof, I have here on to send and cause the seal of the City of Helena, Montana be affixed this thirteenth day of March twenty-twenty-three, Wilmut Collins, Mayor, Clerk of the Commission, Dennis Clayborne. Craig Maier, would you step forward, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it.
You have the floor.
So it's important for us to have our Arbor Day proclamation each year so that we can maintain our tree city USA status, which we've had, I think, about thirty-eight years now, so that's great. And this year's Arbor Day celebration will be up at the Mount Helena Trailhead. And it'll be on the twenty-eighth, and we'll be starting about nine AM. We're gonna have several school groups of kids coming up there, and we're gonna plant trees on Mount Helena and some of the open spaces up there.
Thank you, Mr. Maier. Consent agenda. We'll do one motion. Do you have anything you want to put on this?
Mayor, I would just recommend approval of the claims and the consent agenda.
Thank you. Claims. B. A resolution amending Resolution Twenty-seven, eight-one declaring surplus personal property and authorizing the city manager to dispose of that property by individual vehicle sale rather than by auction. C. Resolution designating environmental certifying official for the purpose of the City of Helena Helena Food Chair CDBG Grant Number MTCDBG-dash-two-two-dash-CF-dash-zero-three. Mr. Mayor? Any discussion?
No.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no public comment online.
Would you take the vote, please?
Yes. Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you. Commission proposals from the Commissioner.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two unrelated things. First of all, as I indicated, it's difficult for me to sit down due to my knee injuries, so if I stand up, I mean no disrespect, I am just having a hard time sitting. And second point, on Wednesday, a decision was taken when I had temporarily left the meeting, and I did not agree with the decision, so I will, with respect, be bringing a motion to amend on item ten D later this evening. Thanks.
Thank yous. Thank you. Any other comments from the Commission? Okay, we'll move on to report from the City Attorney.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. I just wanted to note for the record tonight and for the public, both in attendance and that may be listening, there were two actions originally proposed to be heard tonight on this agenda on this agenda for tonight. They are known as the Westside Woods Preliminary Platte and the Mountain View Meadows Preliminary Platte and the corresponding actions. They were originally proposed to be for tonight, they will be because of statutory requirements for notice. Being fifteen days ahead of time, they will be instead on April tenth, and the notice requirements will be satisfied at that time. I just wanted to note that for you and for the audience. Thank you.
Thank you. Report of the City Manager.
Mayor, I have nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. Communications from Helena Citizens Council. Representative Andrew, you have the floor.
Mayor and Commissioners, just briefly, I wanted to mention
You want to put the mic?
The Citizens Council will be doing their door hanger outreach, it's done semi-annually.
I think it's off. You wanna press that little button there?
Is that your pace there?
No, no. Thank you.
Okay, we'll try it again. The Citizens Council is doing their semi-annual door hanger outreach. We've been kind of thwarted by the pandemic. The last time, two years ago, we just kind of didn't try to engage people. We just dropped off packets for them to look at and respond back to our coordinator. So this time, each district member will get, I think, a packet of fifty. We'll try to actually engage people, ring doorbills, talk to them, see what their concerns, thoughts, maybe off, see if they have solutions to city issues. So that should be beginning sometime in in the spring, hopefully, you know, in the next couple of weeks. We'll see what winter does to us, but that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Andrews.
Mr. Mayor, question from Mr. Andrew, sorry.
Mr. Andrew, you have a question. You have a question there.
Thanks for letting us know that. So the packets, can you briefly describe them?
We'll have a handout that kind of lists email addresses to, for them to follow up with. With just some general thoughts. One thing it says, "Help us represent you by sharing your concerns, thoughts, and any solutions you see regarding city issues. Let's work together to make our community of Helena a great place to live, work, and enjoy." So a lot of this is to collect data for the database, so any city-related emails can be sent out in a mass emailing to people that choose to give us the information that we would need to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, follow-up.
Please.
So do you leave one at each door that you knock on, or is it just the people that you actually, you know, that you actually engage? Or is that?
It's hard, some of these districts are so big that we can't get to everybody, but, you know, twenty-eight people with packets of fifty plus, maybe, you know, a few more will, it'll be kind of up to the individual on the on the places that they go. Apartment buildings are kind of hard to do. So it's mostly residential homes and and hopefully trying to get people that don't answer their doors and, you know, engage us.
Thank you. Sounds like a lot of good information ahead of you.
Yeah, it can be a good outreach for just a communication with, let them know what the Citizen Council does and and just hear their thoughts and give them another avenue to express themselves.
Thanks, Mr. Andrew, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. Regular items. Consider approval of the temporary employee pay matrix. Director McMahon, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight I'm here to propose to you a new pay matrix for our temporary employees. We did do a market analysis on our current pay matrix, and we're recalibrating it to more accurately reflect what's going on in our community for these types of positions. So last year, we had the temporary matrix that came in front of you in April, knowing that it was a one-year matrix, and we were gonna look at it, look at the sustainability, look at our market adjustments, and then appropriately and accordingly adjust our pay matrix for our temporary employees for this coming season. There is one change that I would like to present to you for your consideration. I had in all the documents that we were making this effective March one. After talking to staff who actually implement and work with pay and hiring and all the things, we would like to propose instead an effective date of March nineteenth. That's the first of the pay period after implementation or approval of this pay matrix.
You done? Okay. Comments or questions for Director McMahon? Please.
It's a question on procedure. Given the change that Director McMahon just said, would we need to move to approve the matrix with that change, or how would we handle that?
Mayor, Commissioner Reed, yes. In fact, in the motion, in the in the materials you'll see, it said effective March one, and instead you would just move to have it effective March nineteenth.
Is that it? Okay. Any other comments from the Commission? Do you have any public comments? One minute. I see here you're talking about reducing temporary employee pay matrix wages by six percent?
Correct. Yes, so last year, if you remember, the minimum went to fifteen dollars an hour. That was approved in April with the understanding that we would do an analysis on the market and the sustainability of that pay matrix. So when we did that and we recalibrated, we discovered that market was really at six percent less at step two. So that's why there's an effective six percent reduction.
So what is it now? When you add up the math or subtract the math, what would that be?
Well, so if you add six percent to, you know, step two would be a hundred and six percent of market if we stayed with what we have now at step two.
Okay. Comments or questions from the Commission? Thank you, Director McMahon.
You're welcome.
I just now entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move to approve the temporary employee pay matrix effective March nineteen, twenty-twenty-three.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the Commission? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Consider approval of the City of Helena web governance policy. We have our PIO, Public Information Officer, Mr. Garson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I am presenting tonight for your consideration the city's new web governance policy, which was developed over the past several months in conjunction with the new city website. Brief reminder for everyone, historically, the city's website was managed through the City County ITNS Department. They no longer have the resources to manage either the city or county websites. And so we went forward with contracting with a vendor that specializes in local government websites, which is the website that we rolled out a couple of weeks ago. We also did not have a governing document that outlined how we managed and maintained the website where authority laid for making decisions related to the website. And so the web governance policy really is intended to ensure that we have the best possible customer experience into the future and that residents are able to navigate a website that is consistent and user-friendly and useful. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have about it. But again, staff was asking that you consider to approve your web policy.
Thank you, Mr. Garson. Comments or questions from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any questions, but just want to thank Mr. Garson for all his work on getting the website to a really great place. If folks have not had a chance to take a look at it, I'd encourage you to do so. It's completely redesigned and a lot more functional. And I think it might not seem like this policy as much, but I think it's a really good example of how we have taken some very serious steps to modernize how the city operates and ensure that we are having policies in place that protect us technologically and really appreciate all the work that you've done.
Mr. Mayor, have a comment?
Please, go ahead.
Mr. Garson, thank you very much to you and your team for the work you've put into this. I think I grabbed you in the hallway after our last meeting and said, "Man, this website's great." So I appreciate the work and the thought and the intuitiveness of the website. Again, it makes it, it improves access for the citizens to their government, so thank you very much for your work.
Man, everybody thanking you, are you making that look handsome and beautiful or what? Because they're all there thanking you for something.
Mr. Mayor, not to miss the opportunity to also thank you for your work. I would also say that I have received a number of people who have called me to tell me how great the site is and how much easier it is to use, so the governance policy is a really important document, but the work on the website is being noticed by our residents, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other comments from the Commission? Do you have any public comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve the City of Helena's web governance policy.
Aye, second. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the Commission? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Consider City Manager employment agreement with Director Tim Burton. Commissioner Logan, you have the floor.
Thank you. I get the pleasure and privilege to report on this this evening. It's it's quite a milestone for us. We have for our consideration and hopeful approval an employee, employment agreement between the City of Helena and Mr. Burton for the position of Helena City Manager. It's a three-year agreement, and the specifics of that agreement are in tonight's packet, and I just, I really believe that it will bring stability to the office, to the staff, and operations of our city government and to the city, citizens of Helena, excuse me. It's been kind of a long road getting here, but I think we've had a very thorough, thoughtful, and transparent process, and I can't say thanks enough to Jim Karens and his staff at CMS for helping us really every step of the way from the beginning. And, you know, at the outset, they recommended that we conduct a thorough assessment of our two previous city manager recruitment processes in order to help us develop the process that we eventually used to get us here tonight. So in doing that, they surveyed city staff and the Commission to gain insight on how best to develop a solid recruitment process, and they did just that. CMS made a significant effort to attract and encourage diversity in the applicant pool, which included ensuring the selection criteria were broad enough to enable individuals with a variety of backgrounds to compete for the position, and issued several media releases regarding the opportunity and advertising in many venues, including those targeting underrepresented groups. And so then Mayor Collins and I thoroughly and thoughtfully reviewed almost forty submissions to identify semifinalists from the initial pool of candidates. And this subcommittee ensured commission involvement by providing training and access so Commissioners could monitor the applications and screening processes online. And due to scheduling conflicts affecting the mayor's availability, Commissioner Dean then served on the subcommittee with me to interview candidates and identify the finalists. The process of identifying finalists included a thorough review of candidate cover letters, resumes, and employment histories, a preliminary interview to cover the terms and conditions of the employment, and a detailed interview with Commissioner Dean and myself to discuss the candidate's experience and their approach to the city manager position. Once these finalists were chosen, we then released those names publicly. And soon thereafter, the finalists were given opportunity to make their case for why they should be the next city manager of Helena. They had that opportunity with the Helena Citizens Council, the leadership team of the City of Helena, and finally us, the Helena City Commission. And all those interviews were observable by the public. Ultimately, it was Mr. Burton that was selected as the next Helena City Manager, and now we are in the position of hopefully approving a contract with him and the City of Helena, and I would heartily recommend doing so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Logan. Comments or questions from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to take a moment to thank both you and Commissioner Logan for all of the work on the subcommittee. That is, it's, I think, a lot more of a time commitment than most people would realize. I think it was a really good decision to, of the Commission, to do that kind of after-action report so that we're not, we weren't only just prepared to go into the city manager recruitment process, but really build a process that will hopefully positively impact Commissions in the future and their hiring. We've worked really hard the last few years to set up structures and systems that the city can rely on and turn to when they need them. I'm excited about the hire and grateful to Mr. Burton for being willing to come back and serve the city, his home city, after a pretty illustrious career working for our Attorney General, then Governor, and and then leading the League of Cities and Towns.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any others? I personally want to thank you, Commissioner Logan. Because I know many days I couldn't make it. You took the steering and you drove the car, so I we appreciate your hard work and all the efforts you made towards this process.
Thank you. You're quite welcome.
If not, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Public comments. Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no public comment online.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Man, we, it took so long. I was gonna give Commissioner Logan the opportunity, but Mr.,
I'd move to approve the City Manager employment agreement with Mr. Tim Burton.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion?
Do we, Mr. Mayor, do we want to maybe give Mr. Burton a chance to address the community?
How do you know he wants to? Mr. Burton, you have the floor if you want.
I do. Mayor, I was going to give a report after the vote, if you don't mind.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion, any other? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Mr. Burton, you have Director Burton, Manager Burton, geez, you got too many titles. You have the floor.
Well, Mayor, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you and each of the Commissioners for the trust you've placed in me. And I really look forward to our continued work with the City Commission, with the city staff, with our strategic partners, and with the citizens of Helena. You all know that we've got a heavy workload. The opportunities are tremendous, and I look forward to that continued work, and I'm just very excited and honored in this appointment. So thank you.
Thank you. Finally, I remove the interim, and we can now see Manager Burton. Item Delta, consider a resolution allocating additional general fund savings created by accepting United States Treasury State and Local Recovery Grant Funds and declaring all grant funds as revenue laws used for the general government services. Administrator Opitz, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. In April twenty-twenty-two, the city received state and local recovery funds through the American Rescue Plan Act and declared that full amount, which was eight million, four hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars and forty-three cents, as revenue loss for the provisional, for the provision of general government services in accordance with the United States Treasury Final Rule Guidelines, which in turn created general fund savings that would be available for allocation for priority projects. To date, the Commission
There you go.
To date, the Commission has allocated five million, six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars towards several projects, including improvement projects at the Ten Mile Water Treatment Plant, replacement of the city's enterprise resource planning software, the addition of an HVAC system at the Civic Center, replacement of public safety's computer-aided dispatch and records management system, the replacement of the radio control building on Mount Helena, facility repairs to the jointly-owned City-County Law and Justice Center, replacement of the city-owned Grand Street Theater building roof, replacement of a type-six wildland fire truck, a partial feasibility and design of a pedestrian bridge to cross Henderson and the Street, improvements to Centennial Trail, as well as set aside a contingency allotment for other projects. At the March eighth meeting, so this past week, at the administrative meeting, the Commission gave consensus to rescind a hundred and fifty-three thousand the commission gave consensus to rescind $153,000 of the original $200,000 that was allocated for the Wildland VI Fire Truck and place that back into the general fund. In addition, the commission provided consensus to distribute an additional $1,973 of general fund savings for priority community-based projects as follows. $1,580,000 to the R. Redeemers Housing Project, brought by Rocky Mountain Development Council via the city's community aid grant process; $250,000 to the Community Food Resource Center, brought by Helena Food Share, also through the community aid grant application process; and $143,000 for a wildfire, excuse me, wildfire risk assessment and education project, brought by Tri-County Fire Safe Working Group, also via the community aid grant application process. It's the staff recommendation this evening that you approved of general fund savings, the allocation of general fund savings in the amount of $1,973,000 to the identified high priority projects, and place $153,000 of that allocation toward the Wildland Fire Truck back into the general fund. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, Administrator Opitz. Comments or questions from the commission? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of comments. First off, I think, I'll start by just saying, I think we can do better on the R. Redeemers project than 1.58 million. I think it's important to note that when we ask nonprofits to submit projects, they tell us what they need. And when we look at what they tell us and give them half of it or thirty percent of it, as a person who spent their entire life in nonprofits, that is, that's not, it's not as helpful as it could be. And a great math teacher once told me, "If you keep going halfway to the wall, you will never get to the wall." So I think we need to look at what we were asked and think about what we are prepared to give. Secondly, I will say, I think all of the projects submitted through all of the rounds have been good and important. And I can speak for myself in saying that I am committed to helping find ways to fund all of these projects in different ways. I think, you know, in a long-term sense, the opportunity to look at a recreation district to fund sports facilities and projects like that going forward is a great thing to consider so that we don't have to use emergency funding to fund things that appear to be priorities for our community. I think the HACF grants have been great ways to support nonprofits for smaller projects, and we have additional funding for that. So I think there are ways, and I think it is important that we do recognize what the community told us when they submitted those projects and the needs that were highlighted. And lastly, I will say something I said on Wednesday. I think ARPA funding is a rare opportunity to address issues that we can't, we can't address through the normal budget process. And if I have heard one thing between starting a campaign several years ago to now, is that housing is a key issue in our community. And so I believe the 1.58 million, I would have said it on Wednesday had I been there, is, it is not enough. I will move at some point, if you would like me to move now or following discussion, I will be moving for a higher amount. But, City Attorney Doctor, if you would like me to do that now or later, I will defer to you.
Mayor, Commissioner Reed, I guess that would be left up to the mayor's discretion. It can be a motion. That was a consensus decision on Wednesday. It was not a final decision, so the motion can be the motion tonight, so.
Okay. I will defer to the mayor then if you would like me to propose... Okay, I will be proposing that we increase the funding amount for the R. Redeemers project to $2 million. And math not being my strong suit, I cannot tell you what that would make the motion be for the total, but that would be what I would propose. Thank you.
Administrator Opitz, are you done?
If there are no more questions for me.
Mr. Mayor, I might have a question.
Please.
Related specifically to the motion. In the staff memo, typically at the, in the staff recommendation, we're given a specific motion to move on an item. And in this is, as it reads now, it says, "Move to approve a resolution allocating additional general fund savings created from accepting United States Treasury state and local recovery grant funds and declaring all grant funds as revenue loss used for general government services." Is that motion sufficient for the resolution that we have before us?
Mayor, Commissioner Logan, I would say it is not, and partially because it doesn't specify an amount that you would be allocating in total. And the resolution itself was drafted pursuant to the consensus agreement, so it could also be a motion to approve the allocation of those general fund savings in the amount suggested by the city and including $2 million instead of 1.58 million for the R. Redeemers, and amending the resolution accordingly. So... Yeah, City Manager, instead of interim City Manager. City Manager Burton just said, "If you approve the resolution as it's written right now, it'll approve the $1,580,000 rather than the $2 million." So the motion should include amending the draft resolution.
So, Mr. Mayor, a follow-up. I'm not sure who for. So further up in the staff memo, it says, "Approve the allocation of general fund savings of $1,973,000 to identify the high priority projects that are listed in the..." It doesn't say this, but I'm assuming it's those that are listed in the resolution. So that figure comes to $1,973,000. Place 153 of its allocation toward a Wildland Fire Truck back into the general fund. So that $1,973,000 is, and I didn't do the math on it either, but I'm assuming it's the total of 1.58 million and the 250,000 and then 143,000. So if we were to vote on a motion, we just need to up it by Commissioner Reed's amount. And then that stands or falls as to the vote. So, so we would need to, any, we should have a motion that has a specific dollar amount, I assume, but I'm not sure.
Mayor, would you mind if I made a suggestion?
Please.
I think the motion could be for the three specific items that you'd like to see approved. It's easier to understand. You don't get the total wrong. And you can clarify in it whether you want the 1.58 million or you want the $2 million as for the R. Redeemers. And then also, and revise the resolution accordingly.
Commissioner Reed, you want to make your motion?
Sure. I will go ahead and move to approve a resolution allocating additional general fund savings created from accepting United States Treasury and local recovery grant funds to the following projects. $2 million for the R. Redeemers Housing Project, brought by the Rocky Mountain Development Council via the city's community aid grant application process; $250,000 for the Community Food Resource Center, brought by the Helena Food Share via the city's community aid grant application process; and $143,000 for the wildfire risk assessment and education project, brought by the Tri-County Fire Safe Working Group via the city's community aid grant application process.
Mayor, may I clarify and to revise the resolution accordingly?
And to revise the resolution accordingly.
Thank you.
I second. It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a comment, I guess, before public comment. I am not going to be supporting this amended resolution. I think I said this at the admin meeting and many times previously. Very supportive of this project. I want to see it move to fruition, but I also, we have limited resources here and other, other community organizations that I think have presented some really exceptional projects that I believe should receive at least partial funding. With the 1.58 million, there is sufficient money to purchase the land, but that is not the end of our investment in this project. We, one of the things I took a look at was, well, about a year and a half ago, we passed a resolution that allows affordable housing projects to apply, to have their building and water and wastewater building or development fees waived by the city. There's only been one project so far that has been of similar size that had those fees waived, and that was the Red Alder Project, also RMDC. It was for eighty-five units, and we ended up waiving $235,000 in building and development fees. That averages out to almost $2,800 per unit. And if you apply that to the 113 units that R. Redeemers Lutheran Church Housing Project will bring, that's going to be well over $312,000 in fees waived. So our investment in this is not going anywhere. I also really would like to see folks start using that Affordable Housing Trust Fund. That's why we started it. We put almost 1.7, I think, $1.7 million in CARES savings into that fund to really get it going, to be able to make some big impact on big projects. And so I, I don't, by no means is this vote in opposition. I'm very supportive of this project, and I want to make sure that we're leveraging all of the funds that we have created to promote these kind of projects, while also being able to support some of these other really great organizations like Family Promise, who is pursuing building, creating an emergency shelter, which is on this continuum of housing that we really need to address sooner rather than later. And I'd like to, as I mentioned at the last meeting, I'd really like to see us put some greater investment into K's Kids. Childcare is a huge issue in our community, and we have a really good opportunity to do that through a community organization that the city has been in the, at the center of since its creation. United Way, which is, you know, obviously one of the most impactful organizations in our community. And in addition to that, I'd really like to see us make some effort, some additional effort in realizing our sustainability goals by supporting the Solar Loan Fund. So with that, I'm going to be a no on this particular motion. Very much support the project, and there's going to be a lot, additional opportunities for us to do that in a really, a very real way through over $2 million in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and what will be well over $300,000 in building fees waived. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, procedural question. So we have a motion before us with specific dollar amounts toward each of the three projects that we talked about on Wednesday. So if, if there's not support for this...
Then we'll go back to original.
Then what can we revisit?
We'll go back to the original.
Mayor, Commissioner Logan, you can make another motion to reconsider. Not a motion to reconsider, but you can make, move to consider another amount or another motion.
Okay. Just to let everyone know where I'm at, it was, I've thought a lot about this since Wednesday's meeting, and I think the number that we came to was a fair number. I think we came, came to it in good faith discussion. It seemed like everybody moved a little bit and, and came to the 1.58 million. And I think it'll get that project, it'll give it a starting place. And as Commissioner Dean said, I think this is not the end of the City of Helena's support of this project. I think there are a number of different opportunities that we'll have to support this. There will be opportunities for other agencies and organizations to provide support for this worthy project. So I'm, I was comfortable with the number that we arrived at Wednesday evening. So I won't be supporting this particular motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any others? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk, you know how to work this machine? Okay, to all the people with public comments, you will be given two minutes to state it, and this machine is supposed to be working for you.
Hello. I'm Emily McVay. I'm the Executive Director of the United Way of the Lewis and Clark Area in Helena. And we are very supportive of the three projects that are up for resolution tonight, are up for approval tonight. Of course, we have support the Helena Food Share Project. I sit on the Local Community Organizations Active in Disaster Co-Ad Board, so I'm very much supportive of the fire training and education program as well. We are very supportive of an increase in funding to the R. Redeemers Lutheran Church Project. That is three of our partner agencies, Rocky Mountain Development Council, the YWCA, and Habitat for Humanity collaborating on an amazing housing project. And that really, part of those projects really were birthed out of the Helena Resource Advocate Leadership Conversations that we host out of United Way. So very much part of the work that we're doing at United Way around the housing conversation on all levels, to the point that United Way would be willing to take our application off the table, or if we were considered for funding, we would just much rather see that funding go to this project than the project that we have moved up on the agenda for ARPA funds to buy shower trailers or meal trailers. We just find that the R. Redeemers project is that valuable that we would support that over our own project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Collins and Commission, my name is Lori Lattis, and I am with Rocky Mountain Development Council. I'm the Executive Director of Rocky Mountain Development Council. And I want to thank you all for your consideration thus far in this process. We appreciate it very much. To reiterate what Emily said, I do support the other projects that you're considering at this point. They're all very important projects to the community. I know that you're well aware of the reason we brought this project forward and the need for it in our community, and that we plan, we hope, to build 113 affordable housing units on the property. The amount noted in the resolution, as it stood at the beginning of the meeting, the 1.58 million, we are very grateful for your consensus on that. And I just want to let you know that that will definitely get us started. It would enable us to purchase the property and probably get started on some of the subdivision design. But we will need to find additional funds in order to take it much further because we would not be able to fund a lot more of the site development without more funding. We, as part of our site development plan, we have the Horseshoe Bend East-West Connector in the plan, which we believe has, we know that that has to be done in order for the project to work. And we also, we know, you already know this as well, funding this project is going to have economic benefits for the future of this community in terms of the individuals and families and even senior citizens that will be able to live there and provide much-needed workforce housing. Again, I thank you all very much for your consideration. We are very grateful.
Thank you. Do we have any others? Amy, you sure you left this area? I thought you left.
You know, this kind of feels like home, Mayor and Commission. Amy Teagarden, Tri-County Fire Safe Working Group Executive Director. And I want to just take this opportunity to publicly thank you for your consideration. It's pretty exciting because... It's pretty exciting because after the article that was at the paper on Friday, we've received six applications from people within the city limits on the west side. That tells me people are interested in this. That tells me people remember the fire from last summer. And it just motivates us to be even more excited to start the planning process. So we've already started, but now with this grant, or if we're able, successful with the grant, the next two months we'll dedicate to planning. We'll gather up our stakeholders that we've met with. We'll develop a rollout and implementation plan and do a robust community outreach effort. While we appreciate the one hundred and forty-three thousand, we're also committed to leveraging that money. And it's going to make us have a further reach in the project area. And I'm just a true believer, it's important if you accept money to try to leverage that. And it will be very valuable for us. So once again, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any others? Happy birthday.
Why, thank you very much. Mayor Collins and Commissioners, Bruce Day with Helena Food Share. And simply wanted to come forward and express appreciation to be considered in the mix honoring our request for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go toward the construction of a new Community Food Resource Center, something that is a necessary, a needed project in our community, something that is ready to go and will be hopefully having shovels in the ground this, this summer. Appreciate your consideration and looking forward to the award and the allocation if that is your choosing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other public comments? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I see no public comment online.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any final comments from the commission? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
No.
Commissioner Logan.
No.
Commissioner Reed.
Yes, aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
No.
The motion fails three to two.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to approve a resolution allocating additional general fund savings created from accepting United States Treasury state and local recovery grant funds and declaring all grant funds as revenue loss for the general government services. And each of these will be in the, one million, five hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the R Redeemers Housing Project brought by the Rocky Mountain Development Council, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Community Food Resource Center brought by Helena Food Share, one hundred and forty-three thousand dollars for the wildfire risk assessment and education project brought through Tri-County. And and placing one hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars into the general fund towards a wildland type-six fire truck.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion from the commission? Public comments?
Oh, no. I just was too lazy to shut it off.
One quick comment, if I might, Mr. Mayor.
Please, go ahead.
I would just, again, unfortunately, I was not there on Wednesday when I would have, I would have had this discussion. But I think at the meeting at the time, we had one commissioner, myself, I had recommended 2.2 million. Commissioner Shertliff had recommended 2 million, and Commissioner Logan had recommended 1.7 million. And so while I understand a decision was made to average that, I would simply suggest a brief consideration of the fact that there were three members of the commission who were ready to give at least 1.7 million. And so I don't know if I can make a motion on top of the motion to change the number to 1.7. I don't know procedurally how that works.
Oh, no. We got to move on. We can't be going on motion, motion. That motion I have failed.
Okay.
And, yes, go ahead, Commissioner. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Any public comments? Madam, Madam Clerk.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
No.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to one.
Thank you. At this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no public comment online.
Any final discussion from the commission? Once again, congratulations, Mr. Burton, and welcome to the team. This meeting is adjourned.